Good morning, mayors, members of the city council. It's sort of awkward saying good morning at 11:40 or so, but I think that's the appropriate greeting. Good to be with you here today. A few weeks ago, Thomas Rowe and some of his team came by, visited with staff at City Hall in the Development Services area, and talked to us about redevelopment of Oakland Court. We were excited about that project, asked them to work on some details, which they have done. Thomas Rowe is the executive director of Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and he is here with us today. He's got an opening statement, then he'll introduce his team, and we will hear from them today about this redevelopment plan. On your desk before the meeting, I passed out their slide presentation, so you can take that with you and review that at your leisure a bit later. And I'd also ask to make sure Thomas and his team talk to you about their public outreach activities that are going on this week and the few days ahead. And so with that, I'll ask Thomas to come up and make an opening statement. Thank you.
Good morning, and again, thank you, mayor and city council, for allowing us to come and just make a brief presentation to you. I've met with most of you regarding the Oakland redevelopment and what we're wanting to do. The housing authority has an opportunity to reface the content of what Oakland looks like, and we can do this by a new program the HUD's come up with, Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which is better referred to as RAD. And by doing this, we're able to go out and apply for tax credits and do other private financing. In the past, the housing authority has not been able to do any kind of loans or finances.
and Thomas just introduced our team. We're glad to be here. And so we're going to talk about college admissions.
It's my understanding it might not be that much of a difference. You think that your money is going to create access that others can't get? Think about the child who is going on merit, who comes from a different type of economic background, and is competing with that child whose parents are doing something like that.
I'm just saying it's not fraud in the same way where you're changing.
Legally, Melissa is correct. There is a profound difference between making a charitable donation to a recognized charity, a university, and paying a bribe to somebody to get your child in that university. You're talking about a million dollar difference between a parent giving a million dollars to this trickster singer and a million dollars to the school. In both cases...
Here we go. Thank you. Yes. All right. Thank you. So we'll walk through this quickly. Thomas did a great job introducing our team. I'm sure you're familiar with the Oakland Court community right now. It's a community that was built, designed in the late '50s, and constructed, and they moved in in 1960. It's around 20.3 acres. As you can imagine, back in the '50s and '60s with urban renewal, many communities went through, and anything old in the neighborhood, they just scraped clean and started new. And that's really what happened in this community. It doesn't have the same character as the rest of the community with the beautiful historic homes around it, and this is what we have. Thomas will tell you, has done some great maintenance projects through the years, but certainly now, the buildings are inherently, they're concrete block inside, they have crushed, sometimes crushed sewer. There are all kinds of inherent challenges in keeping these types of facilities up. So with this new funding mechanism, it's a great opportunity to start a new design. And I just wanted to point out, members of our team, Reagan Smith was integrally involved with the North Highland Avenue Planning Study, which runs right up against the Oakland Court property. With these, your design guidelines, with the City of Murfreesboro's planning guidelines in place already, it gives a great foundation for us to start this planning effort for the community. Let me take you just a bit through the process we're going to have here. I think it's highly important that the community be involved in the outcome and the design of the Oakland Court development. What you see here outlined are three meetings, public engagement meetings. Yesterday, we started some of our meetings with the city departments. Last night, we met with Oakland's mansion. Today, we will meet with residents and different stakeholder groups. And this effort over the next three days, and then Thursday, we'll have more residents and the public invited to come at the Housing Authority office in the Maple Room. And those will be opportunities for us to engage with them, hear about what they would like in their community, what their concerns are, what their hopes are, and we will take that information. When we'll go back for about a month, and we will work with that, begin to develop some preliminary plans, then we'll come back on April 23rd through 25th and do the same thing, engage those groups, let them see what we're working on, and give comments. And then finally, we'll come back again on May 22nd, and we'll present the final product. So we hope through those engagements with the community, we'll be able to come up with a plan that is right and suits this. Each neighborhood, each community is different, and we want it to suit this one. The planning objectives we have will, just good common sense, tried and true planning objectives, respecting the scale, the context, the history of the neighborhood. First and foremost, creating safe and secure streets and spaces in the community using SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Design principles, that will help and create a safe community. Having front porches on the, having eyes on the street, having spaces that people can get outside, supporting health and wellness through greenscape, sidewalks, playgrounds, open areas. And as I mentioned, there are beautiful, beautiful, and you know this, historic homes throughout this community, and we want to take architectural cues from that and incorporate that. The program really is on RAD funding, a one-by-one replacement. So the idea is, in Phase One, the funding that Thomas is going for now, will include taking all the homes that are on the Oakland property now, 76 homes. We will move residents away. Those first residents for Phase One construction will come back, and that will replace all the Oakland home properties there. The next phase will be to incorporate Mercury Court, and there are 76 homes there. And when Phase Two construction, Thomas, this will be another cycle of application, but the Phase Two construction will then see on the Oakland Court property, all of the Oakland Court residents and all the Mercury Court residents, which then leaves the Mercury Court property of 15-plus acres for future development as well. We've done a little study, and I want to point out, this is strictly a planning, does it fit, a test-fit study. This is not the design, but when Thomas first approached us, he said, would 150 units fit on this property? So we had to do a little study to look at that. And as I just mentioned, in Phase One, we'll be replacing all the 76 units of Oakland Court. Phase Two will be the units for Mercury Court. And the answer to Thomas was, yes, this property will accommodate 150 homes. And these homes are, we envision, single-family, duplexes, triplexes, and possibly quadplex townhomes. So they are all single-family or townhome-type arrangements. Very quickly, the schedule for this, we'll be completing the master planning effort. As I mentioned, June 4th is the deadline for Thomas to submit to THDA, so our master planning will be wrapped up by then. We'll be coming before you again for rezoning. The property, as we met with the planning department, needs to be rezoned to a planned residential district, and so we'll go through that process, understanding that takes about five months. We'll be doing alongside that some preliminary architectural design, and the Phase One construction would start early in 2020, and needs to be wrapped up for completion at the end of 2021. And should Thomas be able to get funding for Phase Two, then that construction would immediately follow Phase One for completion sometime around third or fourth quarter of 2023. So in a nutshell, that's the schedule. And then I was asked to share a few bits of experience, this personal experience of our team, with a firm there in Knoxville, Knoxville Housing Authority, KCDC. This is Old College Homes Apartments, which is now Mechanicsville Commons, and this is how that turned out, the homes there, single-family and duplex homes that really rebuilt that neighborhood and knit back into the original Mechanicsville Commons neighborhood. I'll share with you, we're not involved in this project, but KCDC is currently doing this very same RAD funding in a community called Five Points in Knoxville. What you see on the upper right are the original homes that were there, that were all demolished, and you might be able to tell this is under construction. I took those photos Sunday. That's what's going back in its place, creating a new community. This is a project that's ongoing by Smith G. Studio in Nashville right now, 94 units for MDHA in the Old Case Homes property. They went through a very similar process of getting feedback from the residents, the community, and community stakeholders. Another project that MHDA has completed recently, and same things going on in Memphis. So these projects are really transforming affordable housing in these communities around Tennessee, and we're excited to be involved in transformation that will happen here in Murfreesboro. Any questions? Thank you.
When you are tearing down the number of units, you're going to replace it with that same number, right?
We'll actually be able to. That phasing is something that we're trying to get feedback now, and Thomas has some ideas about how it could be phased to relocate as few families as possible in that first phase, but we'll also be talking with city services and things, because there are inherent complications of keeping part of the homes ongoing and served while you're tearing down some, so...
Well, for instance, if you tore down a unit, like for instance, my family is living in a unit with four, okay? When I move back to my location, will my unit accommodate four? Are you cutting square footage, or will I come back to the same square feet?
Yeah, that is a very good question, and yes, the RAD funding requires that if a family of four, or, you know, is it three-bedroom or four-bedroom, that that has to be replaced exactly. So I'm hoping, I don't know, I can't promise the exact square footage would be there, but hopefully, it will be arranged. It could be larger. I doubt it'll be smaller, but hopefully, it'll be arranged in an arrangement that we like to, it's more popular to live in. Years ago, every room was real closed up, and so many of us enjoy that open kitchen living area. So we'll be taking that feedback from the residents and try to align the design with what they want. But yes, we're supposed to be able to provide the same accommodations to the current residents have for their future home.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if my family had four in it, and we were used to a certain amount of square footage, and we moved back, and if some of that square footage was taken away, that wouldn't be too good.
I can understand that. When I've, when we've worked on these homes before, typically, the square footage is arranged in a little bit different way, and many times, it is just a touch larger. Can't promise anything right now, but I think it's usually pretty close, given past history.
And the residents, they are paying about 30% of their income for staying there, right? Right now? Is that right?
30% of their income for rent, and you told...
Right. Okay, so when the new project is completed, and my family moves back, still 30%?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
What's the mix look like of the current, the current homes that are there now, as it relates to single-family duplex?
I have a, I'm not sure I brought it today. I think it's a, close to, pretty, close to half and half, single-family duplex, something like that.
A total of 54 buildings in that development, and the one-bedrooms are made up of duplexes, two-bedrooms are duplexes, three- and four-bedrooms are single-family.
And with the new design, will it have any kind of, any kind of shared space, common area inside the townhome unit, or will it just be, if it's a quadplex, will it be four completely separate?
That's what we envision, our four separate, separate homes in a townhome that are, you know, side by side, is what we envision versus more of a garden apartment style. I think we're looking more at a townhome arrangement where there would be individually based.
This may sound like a pretty basic question, but to what degree do, does, I mean, to what degree are we supposed to be involved in this? I mean, with this, I mean...
Basically, you're not. We've come to you because the housing authority people think it's part of the city. It's not, so you're going to get feedback from it as well as us, but we need your support in the redevelopment.
So really, the only thing it boils down to is if we rezone it?
Right. We're looking to rezone from what it currently is now to the planned residential development.
What is it now?
Stray zoning RM 12 or 16, if I recall.
RS?
RS.
No, residential multifamily.
Yeah, because duplexes, yeah.
We'd invite you to participate in the public session. Come on over to the Maple Room at the Housing Authority and kind of see what we're doing.
More evening.
Yeah, more evening.
Is this just going to be for the Oakland area?
We do have resident meetings specifically for the residents, but tomorrow night's session is for the public at large, so...
So this is just the Oakland area? You're not talking about the area with Bealeboro and Council? That's not what you're talking about, are you?
Just Oakland Court.
Okay. Another question hit me. Give me a second. Oh, you know, in Murfreesboro, we are kind of landlocked, you know? People moving here can't really find places. Where would these people relocate to in the first phase? Where are all these people going?
The way we have it broken up, we'll have to move across the 25 thousand. We will move as many as we can into our other properties, which could be either the other side of Oakland, or at Mercury, or Parkside. And then those that we don't have space for, we'll have to go on the open market and find somewhere for them to rent.
But there will be a guarantee that they will be placed somewhere, and they won't be on their own out here scrounging for a place to live, right?
Part of the program is, we pay for relocation costs. So we'll pay the difference. They'll continue paying what they pay for rent now. We will pay the difference in the relocation part of it. And then part of the program is, they have to be allowed to...
Here again, I know we're kind of landlocked on space. Well, excuse me, is it a possibility that some of these people may have to move to Laverne, Smyrna?
No, the same Murphy Borough.
Interesting.
Hard as well, you know, we'll work hard to keep them in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And landlock is our problem, but land is so expensive here, and we're sitting on 20 acres with only 76 units on it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Look what we can do with that 20 acres.
You're going to do a miracle. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, let me just clarify a previous statement. It's Zone Residential Duplex, RD, so by entitlement, they would be able to go back and reconstruct the development according to the RD zoning, and get the units that would be entitled there. I don't have that specific math, but they...
That allow for quadplexes?
It's residential duplex, it's only two-unit.
So we need to, we'll need to approve of rezoning to enable that. You know, I mean, my, just the only thing that I know would be a question, and something that I just bring up as it relates to when y'all build the PRD out, is I would think the common spaces, or whatever you call those, would not be something that I would be in favor of.
As far as inside the units themselves, inside the homes?
Inside, yeah, not outside, inside.
Yes, and I think our expectation...
Here are living rooms, here are kitchens. I'm not, I wouldn't be...
I think our expectation in the zoning, the PUD zoning, will, would specify that these are single-family units. That requires a multifamily element, if you will, although it would be, would be something they could suggest in the PUD, I think, staff, the planning commission, the mayor and council, and they're, the team's nodding their head that they plan, and we'll follow that. No shared spaces. It'll be, it'll be a single-family unit, that's how it'll be treated in our zoning ordinance, how it'll be treated in our building code, and it's also how it'll be treated by the Housing Authority as far as their development and leasing arrangements.
And I have another question. When we, when you relocate these families, what about families that have children in certain schools? For instance, if a child goes to, let's say, Hobgood, and you relocate this child, and they are in the Skales Elementary Zone, what are you going to do about the school system? Are you going to provide transportation, or do these kids have to move out of their zone to another school? I think that'll be an issue. Are you going to make sure my child has transportation to get to the new school?
I can't guarantee that we can make, I mean, we have no transportation mode. We don't have buses or vehicles to transport kids in, but we will work to try to keep the kids in the school systems. It all comes down to be able to find any units and places to move to.
Okay. So I would like for you all to put on your radar, relocating these kids, how they're going to get to the schools.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry about the audiovisual conflicts there. I'm trying to make sure the screen doesn't shut down. When the screen shuts down, the audio shuts down as well. So, and I think that's all we have today, if there are any more questions. If not, Mr. Tindall and the mayor would move to the next.
All right, we'll move into budget objectives. Mr. Tindall?
Yeah, it's that time of year, and we started our budget process. We started talking with departments and asking for their needs for the upcoming year. Before we get too far into that, though, we'd like to have time, and this is the opportunity for council to discuss budget objectives for next year. You have a memo that came with your council communication that suggested a few objectives for us to hit. We've talked last year quite a bit about the need to balance our revenues and expenses, and I think it's fair probably to say that that is an objective that we'll maintain this year and in the coming years. But a couple of things that we are also recommending and considering for council objectives is that we, we take a longer view on what the budget is. We do, one year at a time, and sometimes it's hard to take a long-term view and understand the trends and where we're heading. So, you know, we've had the opportunity to get together a little bit individually and talk about the longer-term view, and we want to continue to do that. The other thing that we want to do this year is to incorporate consideration of our capital improvement plan into the budgeting process, so council can see the impact of that on budgets as we go forward. Of course, that necessitates a longer-term view, because it usually involves some type of financing. We want to put a, put before you a CIP plan that isn't just solely focused on debt, because there are other funding mechanisms that we want to look at, and we also want to give council a better picture on CIP projects, to make sure that we are giving council the understanding of what an entire project costs, a full, full cost for a project, including operating costs, so you can see that as we go forward. And then, you know, that, and making sure that that's updated each year as we go, so if we have a project that's out five years or more, that we are still updating on an annual basis, what we believe the costs are, to give a better and a fuller picture of the impact of capital improvements on our budget as we go forward. So those are some of the, some of the basics this year. You know, we have our financial policies, and we're going to do our best to keep within the policies that we have that would impact our budget. So with that said, I'll turn it over to the mayor to allow council to have a more full discussion on what they would like to see this year coming from the budget.
I think Mr. Tindall has said that he's had the opportunity to speak, speak with individual council members, so really, I think it'd be good to go through different aspects that each council member would like us to discuss with the budget. And, you know, that is the tough thing with the budget sometimes, is Mr. Tindall hears from seven of us, and is trying to mesh that together. So let's open the floor, and I want to throw out one thing, and just to give everyone an update. We've had several meetings over, golly, the last four years on emergency, medical emergency response inside the corporate city limits. And, you know, with that, we've seen several things from our dispatch that we've, we've worked on. I mean, to give you an idea, let me pull this up. We've worked on hiring and training dispatchers to fill vacancies, redirecting administrative line calls that are currently going into our dispatch center, into the police department, installing a program called Locution, alerting software that will greatly speed in the dispatch process. There's an RFP out right now, within the next two weeks, for call processing software to quicker determine, quicker call determination and dispatch times, training and certifying personnel on a medical, emergency medical dispatch, hiring additional dispatchers to take reports, instead of that coming in as a 911 call and having to handle that through dispatch. And then a new radio system that will increase tactical channels to offset all the traffic on the primary dispatch. So, you know, with that, this started back with Mayor Burgess. We had several different discussions with an interlocal agreement on how ambulance service or ambulance transport took place inside the city. That, you know, was, did not move along as quickly as we had liked, and really, going into our firefighters being able to provide ALS, that we have done and made a significant investment to allow them to do. And really, what it boils down to is coordination with Rutherford County EMS on how that, how our teams be in dispatch. The way it works right now, a call comes in, if it does not come to the Murfreesboro Dispatch, it goes to Rutherford County, the Sheriff's Department. Then if it's a determined medical call, that goes to Rutherford County EMS. And what we were seeing, and we're working on the data now, that there are medical calls within the City of Murfreesboro that we're not getting dispatched to, even if sometimes we could get there quicker. So that's when Mayor Ketchum and I started a task force back in October of this past year to get all the municipalities together on how we could do that. And a lot of good things came out of that. We were able to help push Eagleville to be able to provide BLS services with their fire department. You know, it's a long haul to Eagleville for an ambulance, so some good things came out of it. But what we have found, we've, the last meeting we had was a discussion on co-locating dispatch, and that would be the Rutherford County EMS dispatch either relocating to our facility or us looking at relocating to their facility. With that, I will say, Mayor Ketchum could not have, could not be better to work with. I mean, he has been great on collaborating, trying to find different ways to save the county money, save the city money. Rutherford County EMS leadership has been the exact opposite. I think Mr. Tindall has said that he's had the opportunity to speak, speak with individual council members, so really I think it'd be good to go through different aspects that each council member would like us to, to discuss with the budget. And, you know, that is the tough thing with the budget sometimes is Mr. Tindall hears from seven of us and is trying to mesh that together. So let's open the floor, and I want to throw out one thing, and, and just to give everyone an update. We've had several meetings over, golly, the last four years on emergency, emergency, medical emergency response inside the corporate city limits. And, you know, with that, we've seen several things from our dispatch that we've, we've worked on. I mean, to give you an idea, let me pull this up. We've worked on hiring and training dispatchers to fill vacancies, redirecting administrative line calls that are currently going into our dispatch center, into the police department, installing a program called Locution, alerting software that will greatly speed in the dispatch process. There's an RFP out right now, within the next two weeks, for call processing software to quicker determine, quicker call determination and dispatch times, training and certifying personnel on a medical, emergency medical dispatch, hiring additional dispatchers to take reports instead of that coming in as a 911 call and having to handle that through dispatch, and then a new radio system that will increase tactical channels to offset the, all the traffic on the primary dispatch. So, you know, with that, this started back with Mayor Burgess. We had several different discussions with an interlocal agreement on how ambulance service or ambulance transport took place inside the city. That, you know, was, did not move along as quickly as we had liked, and really going into our fire, firefighters being able to provide ALS that we have done and made a significant investment to allow them to do. And really what it boils down to is, is coordination with Rutherford County EMS on how that, how our teams be in dispatch. The way it works right now, a call comes in, if it does not come to the, to the Murfreesboro Dispatch, it goes to Rutherford County, the Sheriff's Department. Then if it's a determined medical call, that goes to Rutherford County EMS. And what we were seeing, and we're working on the data now, that there are medical calls within the city of Murfreesboro that we're not getting dispatched to, even if sometimes we could get there quicker. So that's when Mayor Ketchum and I started a task force back in October of this past year to get all the municipalities together on how we could do that. And a lot of good things came out of that. We were able to help push Eagleville to be able to provide BLS services with their fire department. You know, it's a long haul to Eagleville for, for an ambulance, so some good things came out of it. But what we have found, we've, the last meeting we had was a discussion on co-locating dispatch, and that would be the Rutherford County EMS dispatch either relocating to our facility or us looking at relocating to, to their facility. With that, I will say Mayor Ketchum could not have, could not be better to work with. I mean, he has been great on collaborating, trying to find different ways to save the county money, save the city money. Rutherford County EMS leadership has been the exact opposite, and have tried not to say that publicly, but we're gonna send an email out hopefully later on today. But I think ultimately what it comes down to is change and, and turf, and the staff. Let me, I don't want the residents to ever think that they're not getting the services, but the RCMs team has been very reluctant to allow our firefighters to be able to do the jobs that they're trained for the Murfreesboro residents. So that's the long introduction to tell you that I think one of the things at the last meeting that I wished had gone better, I think it's become apparent that we are going to have to put a plan in place and a budget in place that we can provide medical service, medical response and transport, transport out of our 12 fire stations. There's seven response or ambulance stations inside the city of Murfreesboro limits right now. The number that we got were over 50 some odd percent of the total calls that take place. So one of the options when we're talking about coordination, there were several people who were talking about building a new communications building, partnering based on population and how we fund that. And one of the things that I just made the comment, and I think this is right, Craig, that, you know, if we're gonna have to spend an additional 15 to 20 million dollars to build a new facility, if we're going to have to share in costs for those services, we can buy a lot of ambulances for 15 to 20 million dollars, and the revenue as associated that would come back to the city, too. So we just asked them, Chief Fokes and asked Chief, or City Manager Tindall to come up with an option, and that option could then be sit down and discuss with the county on whether we need to do that. I mean, my, my number one goal, we've got to make sure that we can afford it, but, you know, if my child needs emergency service or emergency response, I don't care if it comes from the Segal, the ambulance station that's on Segal Road, or if it comes from Fire Station 7, whoever can get there quickest should be able to get there. And that's what we're, we're trying to work on. So Chief Fokes is here if I've, if I've missed anything.
Thank you, David.
Yeah. I hate to put it in this manner, and I hate to say it, but I mean, it's gotten to this point over, how long have we been working on this, chief? Yeah, under the current leadership at, at RCMs, I'm not inclined to think that we are ever gonna be able to get something worked out to, to, for the, to make sure that our citizens are, are getting the response that they need. So, the reason I say that, I think we're, we may have to see what that's gonna cost in this upcoming 1920 or 2021 budget on what the fiscal impacts. There's two options. It would be a go-along where we would do it by ourself, or it would be partnering with either St. Thomas or Vanderbilt to be able to have that services provided in our city and that be managed by those groups as well. That's my response on the budget to this point.
So we're putting together numbers, Mark's putting together numbers right now to see what that, that impact would be. You know, obviously there's a capital investment that more than likely we would have to accommodate, and then depending upon, as, as the mayor said, what kind of agreement we could reach with a private provider, or whether we go it alone, it's gonna, gonna have another impact. But it's, you know, we have, I've been in some of these meetings. I've only gotten to this about a year, but it's extremely frustrating, RCMs' responses to some of this. And, you know, we've, we've invited them to, to this building, to move into this building, come view this building. We have capacity. We have, you know, it's a hardened building. It can accommodate some of the call processing when they come in, you know, and even some of the dispatching and the, the police, law enforcement can dispatch their own. But the call handling when it comes in and have everybody in the same room and make it a lot more efficient, and they just refused, and their only answer is, we need to build a new facility for 30 or 40 million dollars, when we have one that exists. And they, they're just not cooperating along. So it seems like under the current leadership that this, this is the response that is appropriate to serve our citizens. And to be, and to be clear, and I think mayor, the mayor had said it when I say the leadership, I'm not talking about the county leadership. I'm talking about RCMs, that, that leadership there, because Mayor Ketchum has been supportive and, and understanding of the issues that we faced, so.
Who's their funding body? Who funds it? Is it the council? I mean, the commission?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's county, but they do get, well, Mark might know a lot more. Chief Fokes probably have a lot more insight into that, but I, if the county and probably some state funds, I would imagine, are distributed. I don't believe that we put any money into RCMs.
Yes, mayor, members of council, they are funded by the county. They do receive revenue that comes back to them. They only, they really only respond to emergency calls. They don't pick up on a lot of the, the non-emergency transports where a lot of revenue is derived from, from other county services or other cities that provide this. And so their revenue coming in from the county is, I think it's 5.18 cents on the county tax rate is what every citizen in the county is charged for the funding of Rutherford County EMS. And so that's where their funding comes from, and they answer to, of course, the county commission, the public safety committee of the county commission on, in those. And I appreciate Mr. Tindall and Mayor McFarland working with us on this committee. You know, it's, those of you that have been on the council that long remember we approved the interlocal agreement a couple of years ago that finally gave us the ability to provide advanced life support and advanced EMT skills to our, to our citizens. That was a huge fight to get that done. That shouldn't have happened because we should, we should be able to do that. And obviously with 10 locations in the city and getting ready to build our 11th station, we're very close to our residents. We've got very good response times. And for us to not be dispatched on the calls that were not being dispatched on, as well as delays in dispatch that are getting essentially forwarded to a secondary dispatch center are causing significant delays for our citizens. We, we're experiencing anywhere from three to eight minutes on occasion of delays in time of getting, and our units dispatched to calls that are within our jurisdiction. The ambulance is getting dispatched, but we're experiencing delays of up to three to eight minutes because of calls being transferred from center to center. And that's what we're trying to work through on the co-location of dispatch is to stop those calls from being sent to a different dispatch center and, and to get that consolidated into one to where it makes that much more rapid and efficient process of getting those calls processed. And so it's been a, a long endeavor, but the funding does come from there. They receive a lot of billing revenue back from their transports, and then the rest of it's derived from taxpayer funds that, that fund the service. And we're, we anticipate pretty much on the numbers about 50 to 60 percent of their transports probably come from within the city, more closer to 60, we think, but a likely 70 to 75 percent of the revenue, transport revenue is derived within the city limits of Murfreesboro off of just the emergency calls.
I mean, it looks like it would be a devastating blow to them to lose all the service and 75 percent of their revenue source. It, is, is there, I mean, are we gonna see it on the county side where they just say, well, we're only, if we're only responding to those, then we're gonna have to have an additional increase? I mean, for, for county taxpayers, which is us as well. I mean, at the, I mean, you, you would think with bold reality of what's facing them, they would be more than willing to play well with others, but obviously if they're not, then, you know, just riding around town, when I see an accident, it's, it's not unusual at all for the first vehicle to show up at that accident that's an emergency vehicle to be a fire truck. And I, and I think that's impressive and a compliment to you guys. But the fact that, that delay is there to, to get the ambulance there, it, you know, it's a situation where lives are endangered and certainly, you know, anything we can do to provide a better service, and truly from, you know, if we enter the contract through the hospital, if we could get a contractual agreement with St. Thomas or Vanderbilt or whoever, it would be also advantageous with the contract through them to have them handling the billing of the insurance companies and stuff like that for the collections and stuff, so that we don't get into that business as well as, as supplying just the manpower. I mean, it would be, it does look like there's a real opportunity for a, a good relationship here to improve the situation.
And the only-
Service anyways.
And you're correct. The only, the only reason that I haven't made the recommendation two years or so ago, before we were even going into advanced, because the mayor asked me, he said, why don't we just get our own ambulances and do this, is because it is, it is gonna affect the rest of the county delivering that service. But with the delays that are currently ongoing and not being able to work through those problems, I really feel like we have to do what's best for our citizens and provide the best service to them, which they're not getting currently, and we need to make that happen.
And chief, you can answer this as well. You know, we went into this process really saying that we were not interested in getting into the medical transport or even the non-medical transport. But the more and more that we've tried to really work well to find a good solution, but I mean, I think we had this as sort of a last, a last case or worst-case scenario, but then the more that we've gotten into that, we, we see where it may not be a worst-case scenario. It may be a best-case scenario for the, for the residents. Now, you know, financially, I think what Mayor Ketchum and I have talked about is finding a way that the city operates from the inside out, that, you know, our, our fire stations are inside the city limits and then we're, we're covering, and the county really needs to be operating from the outside in, you know, coming, it, it doesn't make sense for a, an ambulance in Blackman to be responding in Smyrna. So that's what we're trying to work through, that, the way that our fire stations are strategically placed all throughout the city, that there's a better way to be able to partner and do that. And this is not anything that we're reinventing the wheel. I mean, this is happening all over the country. And the fight that we have had to, we've had, the fight that we've had to work through on just being able to get our team to be able to provide ALS has been unreal. You know, so I, I think that's something that now we've come to the conclusion that if we're gonna be able to have our own control on how we're gonna provide services to our residents moving forward, that this may be the best way to do that.
Yes, and I, I agree. It, it has been kind of the last thought as far as, we've always been in a stance of cooperating with the county and having that partnership of working together. And I really, I think I told the mayor that whenever we worked through the interlocal agreement, which he literally had to meet with Mayor Burgess and go line by line of the interlocal agreement for them to agree to the interlocal agreement that we developed for us to provide advanced skills. But I told him at that point, I said, I, I really feel like within the next year that everything will kind of mesh out and that we'll be on a great working relationship. They'll realize that we're not, we're not here to do anything but provide the best service to our citizens and provide the highest level of care. And obviously I was a little bit mistaken in their stance and approach to it on the cooperative side. But that's what we've always entered the agreement with or gone into the interlocal agreement with, and everything else that we've tried to do is for the, the main focus is, has to be on our citizens and their safety. And that's what our main focus has been, and that's what we've tried to approach that as, and having that cooperative stance. But it's just not worked in any regard whatsoever with our leadership at Rutherford County EMS.
Chief, one last question. Do we have the space? I know we've got the brick and mortar built in there, and it's heated and air-conditioned, and everything's lovely as far as just the living quarters and the dining area and all that for, for additional people in our fire stations. I'm assuming you're talking about probably two people additional in each fire station.
Yes.
Do you have living quarters in each fire station currently that could be allocated without an additional expansion on each fire station?
Yeah, the fire stations we currently have would require no expansion. There'd be very minimal expenses as far as locating the, the ambulances in our stations. There's not, you're not gonna be adding any space to the existing stations that we've got to add. The number of ambulances that we would need to cover the city, which we're running those numbers now because we're trying to make sure that we're, you provide coverage, but you're not providing too much as far as in the way of having crews that are not being utilized as much as they need to be. So we're, we're kind of running unit, hour utilization rates of what those numbers would look like, and if seven ambulances truly cover the city, well, and so with adding those seven, we would have no issues with adding those to our current stations.
What's an ambulance cost?
Fully equipped, just under half a million dollars. 400,000 to 500,000 is what the numbers we're coming back with, and that's, that's fully equipped. And that's with the cardiac monitors, the, the stretchers, everything in them, fully equipped.
So have one at each station. You're looking at basically $6 million or so.
Yeah, we'd be looking under $5 million of a capital investment, we're thinking, to get everything started for the ambulances and all, fully equipped for what we would need. That's, that's basically placing seven ambulances in, in service and having the spares, reserves that we would need for mechanical issues or otherwise.
But there would be a cost recovery with that also, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we would anticipate cost recovery. Like I said, 70 to 75 percent of their revenue is likely derived within the city limits, and we would be able to recover those through transport and et cetera, and build that back. And then part of the planning process with partnering with a St. Thomas or a Vanderbilt would be to capture those non-emergency calls, because the non-emergency calls are, are what produce the revenue that a lot of, that sustain a lot of EMS entities across the state. They use the non-emergency traffic to help pay for the emergency side of the house. And so doing a partnership agreement or franchising that out to providers would provide some of that income back that would even better sustain that.
So, so- One more question. Said that three times, hadn't I? How would this impact the person who's in the private sector out there who provides that non-emergency service, say, somebody going from Adam's place over to the hospital or something like that with a non-emergency call currently in the private sector? Would they still, I mean, we're not gonna put them automatically out of business, are we? I mean, I-
Yeah, what we would, what we would have the opportunity to do there is whoever, if we contract with someone to be that kind of franchisee or gatekeeper, those services could also be a franchise component underneath that umbrella. We would control it, but they could still continue to transport their patients, and they would likely have to pay either a fee per transport or a, a franchise fee to be able to continue to do that. But it would, it would be revenue that we would use to sustain and support the emergency side.
After you, I mean, we're gonna have to have employees. We're gonna have to have more employees. That's obviously gonna be an expense. We got the capital expense. Are you thinking that the, the revenues we give back cover all of that? Some of that, what?
I think we could probably recover some of the initial capital investment. The employee costs, I think we could almost completely recover with pulling in the non-emergency revenue through a partnership arrangement. And even when I say the operational expenses, I mean, operational expenses going forward as well, because we plan to make sure that we've got, covering the operational expenses to replace ambulances, replace the cardiac monitors, replace those things, having a replacement cost built in to recapture that to where we can make it self-sustainable going forward. And our, our emphasis would be going in a revenue neutral to provide the EMS, that on the, the city side of the emergency services side through the non-emergency revenue coming back. And that can be done numerous ways. We could contract it out. We can partner with another entity. We kind of oversee that franchise. We can, we can do it ourselves. But that would be more of a capital investment because you have to have ambulances to run the non-emergency side of the house as well. But you would, that's the most revenue that you would recover if we were doing it all ourselves. But additionally, that would put your non, the current private companies that are operating, that would, that would put them in a stance where they wouldn't be able to function within the city.
And we're early in the process. I mean, that was one of the things that initially asked to come up with a pro forma on what the capital cost would be, what, you know, it gets pretty detailed when you start talking about transports and trips inside the city limits, what the payer mix is with your insurance, how much we recover, and how that would go through. I mean, I, I think we're early in the process. I mean, our interlocal agreement says that we have to give a six-month notification to the county before we can opt out of that interlocal agreement anyway. So, I mean, I think best-case scenario, early 2020 would be best-case scenario if we decided to go this route, because if, if we did decide to, to go the route, we would have to put an RFP in place to invite, you know, St. Thomas, Vanderbilt, whoever, to, to bring in bids on how that they would, they would do the service. So there's really gonna end up being two or three options on which direction you want to go, and financially we need to find out which one is the, you know, the best for patient care and overall and what we, what we need to do.
And we're, and we're also still hopeful- Yeah, and we're, and we're also still hopeful that there's the option that the county comes around and we could work with them and, and kind of do this umbrella partnership with the county.
My, my thought is, when we talk about the financials of this, I, I would think we have a real good case to be made as to fiscal impact upon their providing service. If you could get those numbers together, as to what the, the impact of us operating our own service is going to have on their ability, their financials. I think whatever personalities are having a problem with it, when you talk about a funding body, looking at what that means, I think you could overcome some of the personality issues by, by, by making a picture pretty clear. And the other issue that I think our, our citizens are going to be concerned about is that they're paying for the same service twice, in our county taxes and, and then buying a service for us. So, I think, to, to me, the, the case to be made is, what is the fiscal impact of us taking those seventy-five percent of your calls away from your service? Now, are you able to fund a county-wide EMS service? And, and, and I think that the funding body would make, impose a, a, a better, better look at what is more sustainable and, you know, that, you know, and the personality thing could be overcome if you, if you make that financial...
Yeah, I mean, we, we would have hoped that, to this point. I mean, I think, I think my last comment to them in the meeting was, you know, we're seventy percent of the revenue, we're your biggest customer, and, you know, we're saying that we want to work together. But I know Mayor Ketrin has asked for a budget to be proposed with that revenue gone. So, to be able to present to say, "Okay, how are you, you going to do that?" So, I think that, I, I think those are all moving, moving forward.
And I agree, the best-case scenario is for us to work together, provide the service. I think there are efficiencies to be gained by us providing the ambulance, you're not having ambulance stations and fire stations within a mile of each other. You know, all of their ambulance stations are typically within a mile of all of our fire stations. And, and when the mayor mentioned that they've got seven ambulances, or seven stations, they run seven stations, but typically, they will shut down one or two of those stations for lack of personnel to, to do those, and then they'll pull ambulances in from outside of the county. That happens on a regular basis, and so there's, staffing those seven stations doesn't always happen. And so, providing that level of service that we're asking for and that we're needing, there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained by, by co-locating together and consolidating those things and, and working together. And that's what we've been really, really striving to do the last two and a half to three years, I mean, since the interlocal agreement passed, to, to make it better for our citizens, and it just, we've, we've hit stumbling blocks, but I'm hoping that you're correct, that it can be worked out.
I mean, that's the number one. The best-case option is to, is to, is to continue to partner together. But I think once we had this last meeting, we, we really need to see what that other option is to, to at least have everything on the, on the table to make a, make a decision.
Partner's great, but I mean, it also comes down to ultimately quality of the service that you're providing. And if you're providing an inadequate service, no matter who's providing it, there needs to be an evaluation as to whether or not we can do it better. And, and you know, I, I don't think that we should do any service in local government that somebody else could provide efficiently and, and adequately. But I, I think we're at almost the point now as to whether or not it's even being provided adequately when you're shutting down centers and, 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 and I think they say that they've got, for the entire city of Laverne, they've got one ambulance allocated. And so, at, if, if that ambulance is on call on this side of Laverne, then the other side is left completely unprotected. Where, with our fire stations, we've got the ability to, to move multiple vehicles from multiple directions and still provide a, a much more adequate service than you would see with what they're currently doing with their ambulances.
Yeah, and, and the one thing that they've never been able to say from the very beginning of this, even on the advanced skills, even though we've, to be honest with you, we've been under an intense microscope with our, the practice of skills that our personnel perform, is that our, our personnel are not performing very well. Our personnel, we get very few complaints from EMS or otherwise on how our personnel are doing on calls and the skills that they're utilizing that are saving lives in our community. And I'm really, really proud of our personnel for the job that they do. And that's the one thing that they've never been able to say in any of these meetings, that it's our personnel are, are causing issues or otherwise, and that's why they don't want us delivering this. They can't say that.
And, and this has come from our personnel calling or emailing that our personnel are very concerned when, you know, we, we got contacted on Sunday night of a multiple-car crash that our, 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 our team was called off of that crash, but they went anyway. And, and, and they needed to go, they needed to be at that scene, and they were called off. So, you know, now I think we have made the decision that whether we're dispatched or not, our team's going. And if it's inside the city limits, then we would rather have someone say, "No, we're good," as opposed to wish we, yeah, wish we, so, that, those are some of the things that I think that, and, and it's not a pride issue, this is not a turf issue, this is just, it doesn't cost the resident or us anymore to send one of our trucks out when somebody needs help. So, that, I think that's really where we are. And Bill, hopefully, you know, it may be the opportunity that we can get back on the tracks and let's partner. I mean, that's, I know that's what Mayor Ketrin and we, we all really want to work, work on, but, you know, we, we really want to be able to go ahead and publicly explore this option, to see if that's the abil, that's a, a service that we need to investigate.
We need a motion.
No, I, I mean, as long as someone just doesn't say, "No, we don't want, we don't want y'all researching that."
Chief, I'd say, look, I'm open to researching it, and, you know, obviously, I think the pro forma is going to be important. You know, we can't just talk about them losing the revenues without them losing the expenses too. I mean, you know, if this is a, if this is questionably a, a, a net neutral, a neutral situation here, you know, they may be able to get rid of just as many expenses as, as revenues. Now, they, it looks like they'd have more hard costs built into that with the buildings and the, and the, the vehicles that they have. But, you know, if it's, if you're going to go into this, what I would add is, and I don't even know what's available out in the world of this, but if there is a way for us to partner with some organization, whether it be private or whatever, without us having the capital outlet, you know, I'm, I'm, that, that should be part of this equation too, rather than just us adding more cost, adding more employees. I mean, look, the, the cost of that business is going to go up. And if those employees are our employees, I think this creates a future liability for us to, to get into this business. You know, and I don't mean, I, I mean, a financial liability, notwithstanding the other liability that goes along with this. So, if there's private companies that do this that we can contract with, I mean, that makes it tough for them to share our space, but, you know, it may be cheaper yet, once we look at the pro forma, to do that, as long as we're getting the calls answered the quickest possible way.
Yeah, and, and we've, we're looking at every one of those options. And it's, and this is not anything that's new. For years and years, Memphis and Nashville are basically your only two fire departments in the state that transported. But now you have, Germantown has started transporting patients within the last two to three years, Bartlett Fire Department, Bristol Fire Department's only been transporting just a few years, Gatlinburg Fire Department transports. It's, it's kind of a, a trend, because you have the stations, you have all the dynamics to create the efficiencies. Plus, the other part of it with EMS has become retention of paramedics, because there's really not a lot of upward mobility within EMS. There's paramedic, there's EMTs, paramedics, supervisors, and their executives. And, and beyond that, there's not a lot of upward mobility, and a lot of the fire services are finding, and if you get people that you're employing as a firefighter, you allow them after a time to come over to the suppression side, you're giving that upward mobility piece, and you're decreasing having to hire new employees constantly because you can't retain them. And that's some of their issues with not being able to staff stations is, is the retention aspect. So, those are, we're, we're exploring all of those options, including partnering with somebody, contracts and, and everything else that we could do to provide the service.
Well, I've heard some, you know, I've heard some stuff from some of our current firefighters, and I know it's not just Murfreesboro, it's everywhere with firefighters, that this kind of business that they're dealing with now is creating, you know, PTSD issues and all kinds of issues, which down the road, you know, the more that we are involved in, the more of that we're going to have to deal with. And, and look, it, you know, it has a financial issue, it has a, a, a personal issue, I mean, you know, all kinds of things that go along with this. We need to be aware of all those types of issues that might come along with this. So, when you're doing your pro forma, please add those other, you know, those other types of scenarios and risks and, and issues that come up with it, not just the financials, okay?
Yeah, and I understand that, and we've, I would put our department up against any department in the state as far as what the mechanisms, mechanisms that we have in place for critical incident stress and PTSD. We've got a very robust chaplain's program. We sell our employee assistance programs to our employees on a consistent basis, they're constantly informed about employee assistance and what it can do for them. And I would put our department up against anybody, and our, and our programs that the city has in place for our employees, I would put those up against any other department or city in the state.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right.
Let me ask this real quick. Are we going to have further dialogue with Rutherford County?
Yes.
Have we got something set up?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make some comments just to the, to the nature of the budget discussion as we're talking through that, just kind of high level. I was thankful for the opportunity to meet with staff, with Craig and Aaron, and that was a very educational process for me, obviously being a new council member. You know, what I see, and I think it's important, you know, to say this upfront, I think our council and our, our, our city staff have done a very good job trying to minimize the, the impact to property owners in Murfreesboro related to the operating budget. As we go through and look at the fact that we've not had a property tax increase in, in twenty years, I think it's pretty amazing that we've been able to do some of the things we've been able to do in the city of Murfreesboro without doing that. Having said that, and looking at where we are today, I think that's going to be a real challenge for staff and for the council. And that's not necessarily me advocating for a property tax increase. I, I think at the current operating budget level, knowing that that is the opportunity to create significant revenue, to, to close that gap and to fund some of the projects we're talking about, you know, that, that's going to be a part of the conversation, I think, for certain, for, for better, for worse. That does not mean there is not opportunity, like in any organization, to find ways to do it cheaper. We should be doing that, I think we should be talking about that, I think that's healthy. But, you know, just from high level, I, I think it's pretty incredible that we've been able to not do that for twenty years and have the level of services that we provide to the citizens of Murfreesboro. I think that's a big deal. So, for me, again, you know, I wish I had as much experience as a lot of you guys have in doing this, but I'm going to do the best I can with what I've got. And, and I think, you know, taking a hard look at the fact that we've got about six million dollars in trash services that we provide that we, we don't have full recovery on, I think that should be a part of the discussion. We, we made that five-dollar trash fee something that was implemented recently, I think, I think we need to talk about that more. I think the impact fee discussion that we've had related to, you know, opportunities to collect revenue and how they impact schools and roads and fire protection and other things is something we need to continue to talk about. Frankly, that hindsight's always 20/20, but that's probably something we should have talked about before now. But you can't do anything about that. And, and even if we did something about that today, there's not a revenue opportunity until someone builds something else. And so, that's not going to fix where you are today. So, Craig, I, I really appreciate the discussion surrounding, and I'm sure I'm the only one that didn't know this, but, you know, when we talk about CIP allocation and X amount of dollars in this budget year, I didn't know that those were partial fundings as we were talking through that. So, you know, that was very educational for me to see that, hey, we may be talking about two billion or four million, but that's of a twenty or thirty or fifty million dollar project. That's eye-opening to me, and I think moving forward, all of our discussions related to CIP-related items need to be, here's the number, here's the number this year. Always the big number, and then here's what we're doing this year. Because it's a lot, I mean, this is a big issue, and it's hard, I, I know, just speaking for myself, I think it's hard to manage all of that and remember all of those things. One other general comment too, I think, you know, there are people in our community, residents in our community that, you know, would be critical of the economic development piece of what we've done to create additional revenue that's helped us kind of bridge this gap. And while I'm not taking issue with whether or not the city should be in the development business, I think that's a, a slippery slope in a lot of ways, I do think it makes a lot of sense for us to, from a visionary standpoint, plan what we want our city to look like and, and have a stake in that as we move forward. So, I'd be very much for an economic development piece. I think you also have to balance that with the fact that that's not going to fix what's going on today, that's a longer-term play. But also the acknowledgement that, my personal opinion, when we've had land sales in the past related to economic development things, you know, I think those things need to be not part of the operating budget, I think they need to be added to the reserves or debt reduction. And I know that's complicated because of the, the bond issues and when we can pay back and those sorts of things. But I think the overall discipline associated with how we work through our budget, just from the seat I sit in, needs to be, you know, if, if our, I guess maybe said it another way, not questioning our financial policy and, just for an example, some of the things I learned in our conversation, but our reserve fund as a percentage of our operating, overall operating budget and the financial policy that, that drives that. If we're in a position today where we're feeling some pressure related to the debt service based on the revenues that we have, my question is, should we be looking at that as an overall tool as well? So, I, I don't know that it's my job to necessarily say this is what we should do, I think that's staff's job, frankly. It's my job to do what I can to provide good insight, work as hard as I can and, and help. But I do think we need to make every effort to, from a philosophical standpoint, try to operate with a, within a balanced budget and do the things we need to do to make sure that that's consistent moving forward. And I know that's going to be painful and it's not easy, but I had to say it.
I agree with a lot you're saying, and don't feel bad about being the new person on the block, because you have that experience in crunching numbers. Every budget, we have challenges as far as, you know, crunching the numbers, so don't feel bad about that. I learn every year on the budget time. And maybe, and I talked to Mr. Tyndall about this, and you all have done a fabulous job preparing everything for us, and we really appreciate that. I have a reputation sometimes of being too abrupt, and I don't mean to come across, but I do believe in tackling the problem head-on. This budget that we have, we just got to get a grip on it. We have to find a way that we can balance the budget, and we're going to have to make some ouch decisions on this budget this year. It's to the point where we must have more revenue. We must have more revenue. It's just like an example, I live in a home with me and my husband and two children, all of a sudden, for whatever reason, I may have to bring a relative or two in, I still have the same income. So, I have to find ways to get more income. And we're at that point, and, like, maybe we have to increase taxes. We've never done it in twenty years, but it's a new day, and we're running a business. So, we have to have revenue to run this business. And increase, looking at that trash, again, fee, we may have to look at increasing that. And the hardest thing, when I was looking at the budget, and I be, I'm looking at it all the time, it may come to the point where we need to freeze all projects for a while. I mean, that's an ouch, but, I mean, we have to get a grip on this budget. This is, these are some of the things that we're going to have to look at.
I guess I'll go down the line here, unless y'all are, y'all ready?
Um, look, I, I agree, I mean, on, on a lot of levels, there's, you know, to, to me, the thing that I'll add to the discussion that we're talking about is, I think it kind of goes back to what we, what we talked about during the, the audit report, which is, you know, raising our revenues right now, I think, you know, we're, you know, there's, there's certainly going to be an argument for raising the revenues, and we've already started that process with the trash fees, we're talking about impact fees, so we, we have... process with the trash fees, we're talking about impact fees, so we, we have that, that process is, has begun, I think, over, over, matter of fact, over two years ago now with the trash fee. You know, the thing that I think we gotta, I think one of the things, we obviously gotta get a grip on the numbers, the dollars and cents of this, we also gotta get a grip on the, the root cause of what's going on, you know, the, the deal that we looked at in the budget, or in the, the audit, and I still have all the information that I need to make a, make a real statement on this, but what I can tell you is, there is no question that there is a problem. When our population growth grows by 35%, and our major streams of revenue only grow by less than 20%, that is a problem. We can't sustain that, none of our, none of our enterprise models work that way, no business that you know that's successful works that way. So, you know, what, what I would wanna make sure we do is, I don't want to have a, I mean, just look, the easy, the easy thing to talk about here is a property tax increase. I don't wanna necessarily have a property tax increase without some sort of policy change. We can't, you know, to, to me, that just makes the, the tax increase just a, just a Band-Aid. If we keep, I mean, you know, I think, I, I don't know to what degree planning and zoning has to do with this, I don't know to what degree economic development and the Chamber of Commerce have to do with this, but, you know, somewhere in this model over the last 20 years of how this town has grown, doesn't work financially, period. And, and I don't think the answer is some infinite number of tax raises going forward. I think if you're gonna, you know, if, if either you say the growth pays for itself or it doesn't, and I think in the last 10 years, based on what we've seen, it doesn't. And we haven't even built a lot of roads and infrastructure that, that I think are critical to, to, to making this place a great place to live. I mean, there's still whatever, 39 projects on our, on our major thoroughfare plan that we haven't even done. And so, I mean, there's some kind of underlying issue at play here that we need to identify and, and have, you know, put together strategies for, for, you know, to, for me to just feel like we're trying to get to a point where we don't just say, well, we're gonna get to a balanced budget two years from now because we're just gonna raise revenues. You know, it's, it's, we gotta, you know, we gotta have some, some idea of down the road, we're not just sitting here again, five years, and six, and eight, and nine, and 10, the same discussion going, well, our expenses have grown by way more than our, than our tax revenues have grown, so we just gotta raise our tax rate. You know, now, we may be overdue, and I, I think there is a discussion for having, you know, the fact of the matter is, it costs more to build a road and a school, a park, it costs more to do dang near everything we do today than it did 10 years ago, and certainly 20 years ago, the last time these taxes were raised. And so I think the appropriate way to use tax increases is just, hey, look, if we're, you know, we serve people, and when the cost of building a school goes from $8 million to $36 million, that's gotta come from somewhere. We, you know, we can't control that unless we decide to not build any more schools, which, you know, at some point, if that's a big part of the problem, maybe that's gotta be a discussion, too. You know, if that's, that's just the way this thing works, this, you know, we can't, we can't print money like the federal government, so we gotta have a balanced budget ASAP. But we need to have a budget that's balanced going forward, not for the next three years until we have to raise property taxes again because we just went right back to spending money. You know, and I, I'm gonna, I, you know, I don't wanna beat on a dead horse, and here we are sitting in an awesome building, but this is where, you know, part of the discussions that we were having a year or so ago, when we talked about the, how much things cost versus what we originally planned on, right? In our planning documents, our CIP, when we have these numbers in there that say, well, this project's gonna cost $10 million, and it ends up costing 14, yeah, it comes in quote-unquote "within budget" because we voted on adding the other $4 million later because, you know, can't just stop at 10 and have a half-built building. But we're, that debt service on that extra $4 million, or the extra whatever million on the police building, depending on which set of numbers you wanna look at, that debt service is part of the reason why we got a million or $2 million of extra expense on our budget this year that we didn't plan for four years ago when we voted on all this stuff. So that's, we're, you know, that stuff is coming home to roost right now, it's just the fa, the fact of the matter, so I'm open to talk about any of those things, I'm, I'm good with those, you know, the things that you guys talked about, I mean, I think that we're, somebody said it, and I, I won't give him necessarily credit right now, but, you know, the, the money that I think we would've spent this year and next year on projects, we spent in the last two or three years on projects that we just, now, it's been spent and we can't spend it now. So, you know, my thoughts are, ultimately, let's try to dig a little deeper into just looking at the numbers, and let's start looking at some root cause, why are we here, what kind of, kind of discussions, and again, try to start formulating a strategy, economic development, the chamber, planning and zoning, you know, what are those type of things? It's so easy for us to just change that land use map when somebody brings one thing up in front of us. You know, we need to have a picture of, I've complained about it for years, or for over two years now, that, you know, that when we have these developments come in, it says there's no fiscal impact, right up until there are six developments, and we gotta build a new school. And so you go from zero, six times, to 35 million, because we're not planning for it. Those are the kinds of things, for me, we gotta fix, or else we're just gonna put councils that'll come after us straight back in this position, and there's never gonna be an answer except, ah, let's just raise taxes. So, anyway, for me, that's what, that's, that's the kind of thing that I'd like to see built into this, and that may be more than what we can do in this budget year, or in, you know, between now and time, we gotta get the budget done, but at least some strategy, some kind of, right at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, on, on bigger-picture stuff for me. And then, I think Ronnie said it, but I'll say, you know, some reset of our financial policies that would go along with maybe a more appropriate, you know, where we are today, if we raise taxes. I'd love to see that coupled with a reset of our financial policies that certainly makes sense going forward.
If I could, Mayor, take, crack at some of those. I think, Councilmember, you're, you're right, we could do much better, and we are doing much better, or are planning to do much better as far as communicating with council on information that you get financially. We may not be able to do that all of this year, we've, we've tried to do some of that, hopefully you've seen that over the last few days. But, you know, you get, you get this book, which is the audit, and it gives you a lot of information, but it's not easy to read, unless you have CPA like some people do, they, they can read these things. But, so, you know, things like summarizing and the highlights and the lowlights of, of those kind of documents, and, and making a budget presentation that can be digested in the meetings that we have over a period of time are, are important things that we wanna do, and, and so we'll continue to look for those tools and, and improve as we go forward.
Craig, I want to interrupt you, but let me make sure I say this, too, I, I really appreciate the manner in which you guys have approached this with us. I mean, I do, part of the, part of the difficulty is this, in this particular budget cycle for me is the, the, I wanna make sure I say this the right way, the, the extra insight into how things are actually, you know, well, what's exactly happening is really, is great, it's just kinda eye-opening, you know? All of a sudden, you see, you see the problem maybe a little bit more clearly, too, and it gives me a little, you know, that's the part that's a little upsetting for me, and it's, but the, the, the process has been great, so I, I appreciate the heck out of understanding it better.
And I think, I think out of necessity, we saw some of that last year, too, when we, when we looked at the fact that one-time, I, I think there's two things that are kind of driven where we are at right now, is that we, we do, we have had, and we have had for a long time, a very lean organization, where we've been very careful on, on how we, how we run it. Doesn't mean there's not efficiencies to be had, and we're working on those constantly. We wanna consistently work on those at all times, but we are a relatively lean organization as far as the, the services that we are able to provide. And then we've had one-time revenues that have been able to absorb some of the increases of, natural increases of costs that we have, and you hit on one, is the costs just go up, construction costs go up. But we're a service provider, and the biggest expense that we have is salary and benefits for people, and they, they are under constant pressure to continue to go, go up all the time, too, so we always will face those, and we've been able to absorb those both through running lean and efficiently and having one-time revenues. As far as population growth, I mean, population, population growth, it doesn't equate to revenue because we count heads and we don't tax heads, we tax certain activities that people undertake, and, you know, so there's, there's quite a bit of variability in there that makes it a little bit different, but one thing is inarguable, is that growth does increase costs as you go, and you have your fixed costs and certain things like roadways that obviously you have to address and, and do that, but you also have service demands when you have a denser population base, that there's more requirements that people have for lifestyle choices and things like that, which all, if we provide as a municipality, are, are things that, that have expenses to them, and usually they're pretty substantial. And of course, you have the emergency services and law enforcement and, and those type of activities which are costly and expensive but absolutely necessary on an increasing basis as you have a more dense population base. So, there are factors that are involved in growth that are, are related to population, but it's hard to equate them directly across, across the board by counting heads.
All right, I agree with my fellow councilmembers, but I think one of the things that Rick said that stands out is, we need to be talking about real numbers when we talk about budget this year. Also, when we're talking about capital projects, we need to be talking about capital projects that are real projects we think we can do and that we have funding to do. I know in the past, we've had tons of capital projects, but we didn't have money to do them. So I think really what we need to look at this year is, look at what our capital projects are for the next two to three years, and if we can do them or not. Credit for that, or do I owe it to you?
Yeah, we, definitely, and, and that's what I had mentioned early on, and I agree with both, both you and Councilmember Lance, we need to integrate our consideration of capital improvements as part of our budget, and, and we're gonna strive to do that this year. And, and we, we wanna have a comprehensive capital improvement plan that shows all the plans and well into the future, and then clearly allocates when they would happen so that council can set the priorities of what we wanna do with those. And it is a full cost understanding for the capital expense, but also for the operating expenses as we go forward. So there's some good understanding on what we'll be taking on on the operating side, not just the capital side. So, those, those, that's an initiative that, that we wanna do this year, you know, to, to make it clear and to give you the tools to, to see that clearly and easily is something that we'll continue to work on, I'm not sure we can hit the mark entirely this year, we'll, we'll develop the documents and information the best we can.
Well, I wanna compliment the staff on the information that we've gotten, I, you know, no matter how many times you go through this budget process, and, and, you know, you, I think Madeline said it, that you learn something, and you've learned something in the midst of this, but, you know, I can already tell that the, the department heads and the staff are learning as we look at the process of developing a budget, and one thing that's been said many times, you know, inadequate information or bad information make for a bad budget, you know? You, you can't make a good budget that fleshes itself out as you live through that budget unless you've got good information. And the one commitment that I've been impressed with from our department heads and from our staff and administration is that we're getting good information, we're gonna have options for how we move forward. It doesn't take anybody that's involved in local government for any length of time to realize there's a limited number of options for revenues on local governments. We, you know, sales tax, property taxes and fees, that's about it. And we have, we have depended upon, I think one of the things that I, I heard for years is that growth will pay for itself. And I think to some degree, we found out that fleshing that out isn't, doesn't happen. It's hard for, in a, in a, a community that's growing like Murfreesboro, it's hard to keep up with infrastructure and the needs of our community and the needs of our employees with just the revenue that additional growth brings in. So, we've gotta look at that picture, and I, I would, I guess, give an amen to the fact of looking at how we can identify some revenue streams. I agree with Rick that, you know, we gotta, gotta get a, a higher look for how each of this fits together. Some of the strategies that we use for economic growth have a substantial impact upon our finances, so it's not just recruiting new businesses, but what does, and what those new businesses mean to us. When we approve a development, what does that mean as far as its impact on infrastructure, roads and schools? And, and we need to have that number, we need to have those numbers before us when we start talking about, you know, thousands of homes going in, into a particular area. So, you know, you know, there's not gonna be a silver bullet, there's not gonna be one thing that's gonna answer all of our financial problems, but I think, you know, a couple of things I would commend to, to all of us is to, you know, stay at the task to making things better and, and finding efficiencies, being better informed, you know, and helping our public. I noticed one of the things in your recommendation was keeping the, the community involved in that process and informed in that process. I think having data available, and I noticed how we're posting things on our website to be able to be, the financial process, the budget in itself, having access to that clearly, making that process. Did you do that, Aaron, or how did, who did the budget online deal?
Well, we worked with a third party, it's all that works with our financials.
I think once the public becomes even more active and interested in understanding the budget, I think this, this'll be helpful, too, you know, to have, giving more information to the public. I commend you and encourage you to do, continue to do that, to, to have the public get as much information as possible. Transparency really does, can provide us with a little bit of extra information as well. But, you know, just commit ourselves to the process, and every year, like you say, I don't think we're gonna solve all of our problems this year, but we're gonna get better. And I think that's a good thing, I think that's a good thing, that we're gonna try to make the process a little bit better this year. And I guess that's all I have to say.
If I could interrupt just for a second and address a couple, couple of things that you mentioned, Councilmember Shacklet, and Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Lance mentioned economic development, and, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, you know, if you do the math, and if you can get your rooftops, you know, houses to balance out on your costs, you're doing really good. Most times, they don't pay for themselves. And so that's commercial activity, and that's why an investment in the economic development does help on that side, because rooftops, just adding rooftops doesn't really normally do that, and that, that goes back to the land planning and the considerations on land planning and what we do, not just from the count, but also the location. So, highest and best use is a community, not an individual developer's, i.e., concept that you have to look at, and as to what goes where. And I think we did that on 840 in, in Veterans when we took a look at what we were using that land for, and made some, made some different decisions. And just permission, a couple, I, I do wanna say, and I think this can reflect on what Mr. Jobe said when we reviewed the audit, we are financially sound as a city. What we're, what we're targeting is a, a long-term trend and a projection, so we, we have a good fund balance right now that we're able to sustain ourselves through. But we can't continue on the trend of having expenses over revenues and eating into that fund balance and set aside financial policies, but just as a, as a, as a practical matter, eventually run out of money. We're not, we're not there, we have to be careful, and that's what we're targeting for, and that's what makes our budgets gonna be difficult over the next couple of years, to make sure that we maintain that, that, or avoid that trend of going downward in our fund balance and, and maintaining revenues and expenses, so that's really, that's really the target. So, I don't want the public to have a misconception somehow that we're getting close to financial insolvency because we're not, we're not even near that. We are strong and solid, but we have decisions that we need to make to make sure we stay that way in the future. And we do have a good program online for transparency purposes to see our, and we, we put some effort into getting that out there, and it's available, and we might -- And we might take maybe, it's a suggestion of council wants, maybe 10 or 15 minutes to show that during council and show how that all works and get it out to the public a bit, but also have council people see how that is.
Let me just put one other thing, and this is not directly related to the budget, but just something to be considered as we, you know, when we, we've seen a lot of changes coming to the table that are altering land use as it was reflected in our 2035 plan. And this is for Gary and other folks to kind of just have on the plate. Maybe we need to have a regular review of the status of the land use that's recommended in the 2035 plan so that, I mean, you know, in planning, I mean, I remember from my education, reasonable expectations by existing property owners and people wanting to make development. That's really the goal of planning, is to try to create reasonable expectations. If we can annually, you know, there's going to be things that change, road involved development, all the things that happen. If we can annually review that and make recommendations back to council as to, you know, this isn't appropriate now. It may have been in 20, when we did the 2035, but each year, the dynamics change. And then it doesn't mean we would shift something from, you know, R-15 to a heavy industrial, you know? It doesn't make those kind of drastic changes in zoning that people are saying, well, I didn't expect it to shift to that. So, and just a thought, you know, on an annual look, look at that land use evaluation and see if there's not some recommendations that we couldn't consider. And I realize that there are opportunities to show, that come up that may be outside that purview, might be unusual things, cases that come up. But I think when, if we get in front of this where instead of we actually see something come before council or before the planning commission that is a drastic shift maybe in land use, then it wouldn't be a surprise to the public if we had put that, you know, some kind of expectation for that to happen. And I think to some degree, we can anticipate that it doesn't look like it did when we did the 2035 plan. Some of, I think there's some things on there now that could probably have shifted to some degree. So anyway, I think in the long-term expectations, I like to have that considered, even though that may not be a budget issue, but it's been something that's been on my mind is I've seen some of the things progressing through planning.
Here, we'll take a look at that.
Thanks.
I don't think there's anything I can say any more eloquently than what the other council members have put up here today as far as our situation, as far as our look at the future. I think we've all faced the challenges of the past with the exception of Ronnie, who hasn't been in on this process, although he's viewed it from the outside. But we've always been kind of misled. And truthfully, we've been told that, hey, you've got debt that's going to roll off and everything's going to take care of itself and you don't really need to worry about it, just do what I tell you. And we kind of bought into it and went along with it. And I think now the presentation that you've given us to, given to us is much more realistic, it's much more hands-on, it's, so not only am I proud of the council members, but I'm proud of our staff for the phenomenal presentation that you guys put forward in front of us to review and evaluate the situation that we're in. The sky's not falling. I mean, it's not so bad that it can't be corrected, and it's not so bad that it is going to take undue hardship, I don't think, on anyone as far as trying to get the numbers back in line. I do think that it's going to take some real thought process as far as, some of the capital projects that we have on the books may just simply need to be dropped from the books because if they're unrealistic and we don't think we're ever going to achieve them, there's no need in having them hanging out there. If you keep pushing them further and further out, every time you push them out, the price of that project goes up, although in our capital plan, it doesn't go up. It just pretends like it stays out there at this fixed figure, and it doesn't. In turn, what we run into is, what we run into in turn later on down the road is the true fact that what we had appropriated didn't enough money, and we've already done our calculation based on that number, so we wind up with these shortfalls. The, I'm extremely encouraged by Ronnie over here because, I mean, for somebody to grasp the situation that this city's in as quickly as he has is phenomenal.
Thanks, Eddie.
And I appreciate the research and effort that you've put forward to make this council a better council. I think that if we look at some of the hard decisions, which aren't going to be popular with the public, everything ranging from, gosh, I hate starting naming names because I don't want anybody to get their feelings hurt before we review it, but there are opportunities out there for us to start evaluating services that the city provides that we may not need to provide. And certainly with the fire department today, we were looking at services that we don't provide that maybe we do need to provide. So I think we're at a point of opportunity, not a point of panic. And I think that the budget that has been presented is something that we'll be able to work through, and I appreciate the staff for doing such a phenomenal job of giving us a workable budget, even though it's challenging. I think we'll come to a successful conclusion as, at the end of the period, to come up with a budget that is going to have some hardship in it, but nothing that's going to devastate anyone, I don't think. I think every, every part of this presentation that I've been given so far has been extremely sensitive to the citizen and the taxpayer and the user. And I think that the fact that we're looking at it from a perspective of how can we reduce the impact, although we know that there's going to be an impact? And to gradually, you know, it's not like cutting the dog's tail off an inch at a time and saying this is better. It's a situation that we really do have the ability to gradually implement something that will get us closer to a balanced budget and improve the viability of our governmental operation in this city. That's my three seconds. Thank you.
I just got like a few specific items. I'd like to see us, if the council discuss maybe a five-year cost recovery on solid waste. You know, we rate, you know, if we're talking about impact fees and property tax, those discussions, I think we have to put those in context and not doing everything at one time. So if we just raised the trash fee $5 and we just started collecting that in January, if we say that the $5 trash fee goes on for this next budget year, say it goes to $7 the next year, but and come up with a plan over, like what Darren has done for us before on the water.
Staging it.
Yeah, just come up with a five-year plan that, you know, we can vote on and say, this is what's anticipated for the next five years, and that way everyone knows what that, you know, what that's going to be. We've talked about fund balance, making sure that fund balance continues to be sustainable, but at the same time, as we're looking at these projections, that we don't build fund balance up so high that, you know, we're in the, when you're in the situation the state is, when you've got a billion dollars in excess revenue, you know, we're collecting that money in tax. I mean, it's great to have $60 million in fund balance, but we need to not be higher than what we say that that fund balance is supposed to be. Just to say that we've got $100 million in the bank because it's, you know, it's not ours anyway. That same plan on roads, I think the one thing that resonates besides, you know, my top priorities I've got here are roads, schools and parks, and, excuse me, public safety, roads, schools and parks, four priorities. I don't think anyone's going to get a complaint for us building more roads. I mean, that's the number one complaint we get in the community. So falling behind on keeping road construction just kills us five years from now. So, you know, a defined road plan that we can accomplish that is not, I know we've got our major thoroughfare plan, but what do we need to do in the next five years that are must-tos that we have to do? And then last, this may be a question for Gary. Not Gary Whitaker, the other Gary with schools. I'd like if we could come up, it's really brought things into play this year, seeing how much overall creek, how much we've increased from the Veterans Project to overall creek. Because I think overall, we were $24 million, is that right? And then this school's $33 million. So, you know, if we've got that increase happening for our next school, a couple of things, I get asked this all the time, and these are probably political questions I wouldn't have asked four years ago, but, you know, the county educates sixth through 12, so I'd like to come up with a plan of how many sixth-grade classes we have in the city. And if we're educating sixth graders that we don't have to educate, the county can educate those, how many classrooms and students would we be able to, is that a school that we wouldn't have to build if we eliminate the sixth grade?
Sure, yeah. I mean, you don't have to answer it today if you can, it's great.
We have 33 sixth-grade classrooms around the district. We would not stop building a school because they're spread all over to 12 other schools. So you like have one school might have two sixth-grade classrooms, might have three, one might have one. So it's not an even spread, doesn't automatically say, but it's right at 700 students that are sixth graders. The other issue of that is the revenues that would need to be looked at and the amount of shared monies of tax collections. If we were to give up, just for an example, 700 students, hand them over to the county, that's a double hit on the city schools. We lose 700, they gain 700, so that's actually double, a 1,400 student turnaround, which means our shared revenues would drop. Right now, we get right to 15%. We educate 15% of the kids in the entire Rutherford County area, so that would impact us. But it's 33 classes right now.
Maybe, I think if we get asked that question routinely.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be good just to have.
Well, I, sorry, I was, we had, I think, the same epiphany at the same time, but I mean, I was, you know, if we're building a school to fit another 600 kids, shared revenue is going to be nothing, the cost of shared revenue is going to be nothing compared to the 35 million plus the staff for a new school, right? I mean, so it's not just, I don't know if that, that's what kind of popped into, popped into my head there, is that it's not just, we just lose revenue. We have now space for 700 kids without building a new school, right? I mean, if it's, so, right? Is that right?
No, because you might have 40 kids at this school, 20 kids at that school, 30 kids at that school. It doesn't stop the building of a school because they're spread at 12 other facilities.
But you have to rezone. I mean, you could rezone and fix that, but.
Rezoning is extremely difficult.
So is raising taxes.
Well, I, if I could do this, we met with schools yesterday and talked about budget, and we did make a request that we get a net figure with detail on the sixth grade issue. And I think that, and it was only yesterday morning, so, you know, we never had any time to do it, but I think that's probably the best to get some of the information and have some of the thoughts that you've been expressed and that we expressed yesterday to give Gary time to put those into some real numbers and to.
That's cool, yeah, that's good.
Ask those questions.
The other thing I had on my notes just going through, is maybe a proposal to look at, you know, because we're not only just looking at capital expenditures on schools, but, you know, I went and met with Ms. Jordan earlier in the year, or end of last year, and Ms. Jordan was adamant on why that we need to build a new bus garage that we're out of parking and, so I really'd like to see a model on what it does to us if we were to, oh, I'm sorry. What if we follow a model like the county does on subcontracting buses out, that we let a subcontractor pay for the bus, house the bus, service the bus, and then what that model would be? And what that would be based upon if someone else takes on that cost, like the county? Because the number that we saw, what was the number for building a bus garage, Craig?
For building the bus garage? A new, what was it?
Two and a half million was our projection, and that was two years ago.
Yeah, I mean, we.
I don't think it's land costs and everything else. I think we'd be closer to five in total based on current costs now and how big we need to make it.
Yes, I think that's something, Gary, that if we could look at, as we're looking at this CIP, I don't doubt that they need a new facility after I met with Ms. Jordan, seeing what they're, they have out there. But, you know, does it make sense to follow a different model as we move forward? So that'd be one maybe to look at as well.
Okay.
That's all I had on my list. Any other items? All right, thank y'all for y'all's hard work. I do, this is the first time, I guess going on what Eddie had said or Rick had said, that, you know, you don't know what you know until you know what you know. And I like the way that instead of really getting into each individual department budget, I really like how y'all set this up now that we can look at the city as a whole and based on assumptions, we can really see what that does overall. Because, you know, it's not, I appreciate all the department heads and what y'all do, but to look every year how much you're spending in office supplies, I mean, that's not our job. I mean, if you need copiers and those things, I mean, that's, that's what Craig's job is. It's not for us to go down every individual budget and analyze why your mileage has gone up. You know, that's Craig's job. And us looking at, at an overall budget on a big picture, yeah, that's Aaron's job now. Sorry, Aaron.
I appreciate that. That's how quick Craig was, be like, mm.
Yeah. But, you know, we've spent way too much time on the minutia in some of these budgets over the years that, I mean, really, our budgeting process should take one or two council meetings just looking at the overall, here's your operating expenses, here's your revenue. If you want to cut operating expenses, you're not going to do it by cutting office supplies 1%. Your operating budget is through people. I mean, that's, and debt, yeah. That's in schools. I mean, that's our, that's, those are our three main priorities that we have as far as expenses. So that'll help us make the quicker decisions, and then we can focus really on what I think we need to focus on, which is the long-term planning on how we pay for all these projects in the next 10 years. Because the project needs are still going to be there, no longer how, no matter how far we push them off, so.
I'm sorry, one thing, and you said it, I think, earlier, to try to get a five-year kind of outlook on roads. One of the things that I don't think we've talked about or seen much about for a little while now is kind of a projection from the state. Is there any way that we can get some sort of projection from the state? Because those are, you know, extremely impactful to what our decisions look like as it relates to, you know, when will Thompson Lane be widened, when will 99 get finished up, Bradville, you know, you go down the list I know we've talked about. But that'll be impactful to how we try to build out our projects in the midst of all that, right?
I say yes.
So that would be helpful if we can get.
Nodding his head.
I mean, I'll tell you that, that's, that's going to be for me an extremely important, when it comes down to, if we talk about raising revenues, by how much? That road discussion is going to be a really substantial, you know, point of importance for me, because I do think that's something we need to, we need to improve on.
All right, so let's move into.
Follow what Rick was talking about there. We need to have a meeting with our local delegation because they've changed positions since we last met, I guess, and we need, and we need to emphasize to them the importance of some of the state funding with the new gas tax and stuff that they're generating, the importance of, to Shane's point, road improvements. So, and if we can go ahead and get something like that started, I think, they're still in session, so it's probably a good time to try and get on, although I don't know that there's much chance of getting anything accomplished this year. But at least we can let them know how we feel this year because a lot of them are new in their positions, and I think it would be advantageous for them to know how we feel about what we need for help from them.
We'll organize, we'll get that organized. Hopefully, we may try to do it on, they're open on Friday, so we may try to get a Friday gathering together. All right, we have a few, there permits?
We do, Mayor. We've got a ownership change at 4125 B Menson Pike. That application still acts the final building codes inspections, but otherwise is in order. And then we have one at a restaurant in a senior living facility at 211 Fortress Boulevard. That application is actually complete and ready to be issued if you should approve those today.
So moved. Second.
Question, second, Ms. Ray.
Vice Mayor Schles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Spuderman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business? I would ask if we could.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business?
I would ask if we could, Chairman Lamb retired from the Planning Commission on this past Wednesday night, so 26 years, is that right? 28 years of service. I think Chase Salas was on the agenda this past Thursday night for appointment. It may be a good idea to go ahead and vote on him to.
We did.
Oh, y'all did? So it wasn't just for a looksee, it was, okay, good. All right, so I know he's needing to fill that seventh spot that everyone loves coming on these late, late night zoning meetings, so. All right, no other business?
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I like that, she's going to be upset, but Melissa Wright was recognized yesterday for the Businesswoman of the Year, and just want to congratulate her. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
And it was, I think, Gary Whitaker's 83rd birthday yesterday. So happy birthday to Gary.